Audiovisual problems with our built-in system. So that's why you see some of the additional cameras and the different microphone setup. Any case, this morning, our invocation will be delivered by Reverend Doug Taylor, pastor of Rebirth Christian Fellowship Church. And our pledge of allegiance will be led by myself. If you're willing and able, please stand.
Let's pray. Father, thank you for this great opportunity you've given us to gather together today to attend to the affairs of this city. Father, thank you for great leadership in our elected officials. Father, you said that when the righteous are in authority, the people will rejoice. Thank you, Father, for giving us righteous leadership that are concerned about the well-being of people and not just programs and policies, Father, but people. Father, we just give you praise today that this is another opportunity that we can stand in unity, stand in fellowship, stand and invite you into this moment. And so, Father, we just pray that all things be done decently and in order. Thank you for the great leadership of our mayor of this incredible city council, Father, and all the residents of these 99 neighborhoods. We pray your blessing on this city in Jesus' name. Amen.
Good morning, Mr. Clerk. Can we please have the roll call?
Good morning. One second. Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore.
Good morning.
Councilmember Smithman.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. Council President Protem Alexander.
Good morning.
Council President O'Quinn.
Good morning. Thank you. All right, council, this morning, the minutes are not ready for the October 1st, 2024 through January 7th, 2025 meetings. Communications from there? No communications from there. All right. Council, without objection, I'd like to suspend the rules to offer a resolution of sympathy for Mr. James Roger Alexander, who is the father of one of our city employees, Colin Alexander. Mr. Alexander passed away this past week and just wanted to recognize his contributions to the city and, you know, of course, giving us a great city employee. So make a motion for unanimous consent.
All in favor, let me know my thing, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye.
And now the motion on the item?
Second.
All in favor, let me know my thing, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye.
All right, thank you. Back to our agenda. I'll read our statement on the conduct of business. All items designated as consent or routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read and all public hearings will be announced. Mr. Clerk, could we please read through the consent agenda items?
Consent agenda for today starts on page two, item one. Page five, item two is on consent. Page eight, we have items, I'm sorry, six and seven on consent. Please note that on item number six, the amount should be $10,000 and we're going to add $5,000 from District Five. Item number seven, we get to add the GL account number, and it is 001 underscore 00 underscore 04220 underscore 542 dash 001. And it was also recommended by budget and finance. As well as item number six, both were recommended by budget and finance. We pick back up with the consent agenda with items eight and nine on page nine. Page 10, we have items 10, 11, 12, and 13 on consent. A couple of changes for item 11. We're going to add $2,000, making the total not to exceed $6,000. And said funds will come from districts one, two. We're going to add four and also five, six, and seven. It's for discretionary funds that concern, so we're only going to add four to this. And let's see, District Six at the bottom, the amount, the GL code should be added for District Six, which is 001, 000, 04260, point 542, point 001. That's for District Six, adding that GL code. That should be it for item 11. Page 11, items 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19 are on consent. Page 12, items 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, and 25 are on consent. Page 13, items 26, 27, 28, and 29 are on consent. Page 14, items 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, and 35 are on consent. Page 15, items 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, and 41 are on consent. Page 16, items 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, and 47 are on consent. Page 17, items 48, 49, 50, 51, 52, and 53 are on consent. Page 18, items 54, 55, 56, 57, 58, and 59 are on consent. And that concludes the consent agenda, and we have a couple of agenda items.
All right. Do any members of the council wish to remove items from the consent agenda? Councilor Abbott?
Mr. President, I don't want to remove anything, but I noticed on item 11 that the backup contract has some errors in it. The dollar amounts are wrong, and Dr. O'Quinn's name was misspelled. So it just seems since that's the contract, it should be right. Because the dollar amounts don't add up. Other than that, everything's lovely. And that's all.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Clark?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to, I don't want to add or remove either. I really want to just congratulate the mayor for really helping out the West Side, District Eight, Inslee Highlands in particular with the demolition. The items 23 through 30 are all one very nuisance. It's a long-term nuisance property. I'm a building hugger. I don't like to tear down buildings if they can be saved, but Mayor, this one, I don't know what you want to say about it, but it's been a long time coming, and it's going to really relieve some pressure off that area. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. President, to your colleague and all of you, as I've shared with you, we've developed a plan. We're going to continue expediting these dilapidated structures, particularly the burned-out ones that are making a priority. That's residential, commercial, and other buildings as well. Thank you.
And if you're curious, staff do document the condition of the structures before the demolition is done, and that's what this huge stack of...
That's what all that is.
Yes.
I know the condition's horrible, right?
Yeah.
So...
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Just want to note that item 11, the contract, OCA will make the changes.
They just need to read it.
Okay. We have two public hearing items on the consent agenda. Items one and two are, do any members of the public wish to remove items one or two from the consent agenda? Seeing none, we're ready for a motion on the consent agenda.
One more second.
I can't you second, I'm sorry. Who made the second?
I didn't.
Okay. I want to say, all in favor, let me know my thing, aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. Consent agenda is passed. Mr. Clerk, I'd like to take item 62 out of order, the public hearing on the East Lake Safe Streets Initiative.
You said 62?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item 62 in ordinance, authorize the mayor, chief police, traffic engineer to continue indefinitely the road closures for Project Safe Streets, East Lake, and a hearing of all parties.
Okay. Mayor Woodson?
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning to the entire council and good morning to the public. It is good to see everyone this morning. This is a public hearing, and so my favorite part about today is that we get to hear from the actual residents of East Lake. This is actually a good time if you are East Lake, particularly in the parameters of the pilot program. Could you please stand or wave your hand and be acknowledged? Yeah, as you can see, they're very deep today. But this was a safety initiative as a pilot program, one of 99 neighborhoods, where we looked at, could we decrease the number of entrance-exit points in exchange for public safety? In the case of the East Lake neighborhood, which is one of three neighborhoods in the East Lake community, could we decrease speeding? Could we decrease prostitution? Could we decrease drug houses, drug transactions? Could we decrease shooting into occupied dwellings and a host of other forms of crime? We believe what we'll present to you today, the answer is yes. And so if you can go to the next slide, just to give you a breakdown of the what, where, when, and how, this started July 8th, with the actual temporary barriers being deployed on the ground in the East Lake neighborhood. But the conversation with residents started well before that, and I'll get into that in a minute as it relates to engagement. We talked about the how placing these temporary barriers as it relates to traffic calming measures at certain intersections, as well as the perimeter mainly was around the Porto Madrid Division Avenue area, and I'll get into that in a second as well. Actually, the next slide will explain some of the breakdown of where the barriers exist. So you know along First Avenue North, the next street is Division, then First Avenue South. And so on the Division portion, well, let me back out for a second and tell you, this neighborhood, according to the Department of Transportation and PEP as well, has over 40 entrance-exit points. So I want to be very clear, we did not close every entrance-exit point in this neighborhood. But we did engage in 19 of them from a very strategic standpoint. And so you see Division, and then you see off of Porto coming into the neighborhood, and then the backside of Hickton as well as 68th Street. The next slide will show you a visual of what that actually looks like, if you could. And so, again, that's Division, where you see the red spots. That's off of Porto as well, and then Hickton, 68th. So I just wanted to give you a visual of the project footprint. The next slide, if I'm correct, gives you an actual timeline. As stated, we started canvassing this area in various forms of residential engagement. We went door-to-door multiple times. We also went to neighborhood meetings, and then we had a town hall meeting as it relates to the deployment, or right before the deployment of the temporary barriers. A lot of that was feedback from residents. What were their issues? What were their concerns related to safety? And they shared so much anecdotal information that we collected. But this timeline tells you in a little bit more detail kind of how we started and where we are. Over the course of this period, it's 191 days. We came to you originally for a temporary pilot of 90 days, but as you can see, that expanded for a couple of reasons. But we're here now over 191 days. The beauty of this almost 200 days is we've been able to collect a significant amount of data and information on the results of this pilot program that we'll get into right now. So the next slide starts with, well, the next slide gives more detail of the community outreach. So again, we had four canvassing sessions. Doors knock each canvassing session. We had an amazing team that at some point, I'll acknowledge the team before this presentation is over. And then we had two town hall meetings, not one. So we had one at the beginning, and then we had one after the 90 days. Now, the next, the next slide, if you would, gets into some of this information we've been able to collect. We started with the removal of blighted structures and identifying structures for condemnation. PEP and other team members were able to identify 25. They also identified separate from that 64 housing code violations. A little bit, if my math is correct, a little bit over half of those have court cases. None have been compliant since. As well as separate from those things, we demolished seven, and then there are five pending for demolition, so that'll be a total of 12. Next slide, please. Then we talk about something that's been important to you for a significant amount of time, code enforcement, which was asked in the form of junk debris, zoning code violations, and overgrown lots. On the overgrown lots piece, we identified 60 and cited them 59 are now in compliance. On the zoning, 11 cases, four went to court. And so you can see the total breakdowns, seven are now in compliance, and four were not in compliance, therefore elevated to the next level of getting to four municipal court judge. And then the junk debris, we identified four, and four are in compliance. And so that's tremendous progress as it relates to residents voluntarily coming into compliance after understanding our laws, ordinance, et cetera, et cetera. I do want to go to the next slide with a lot of information. We talk about cleaning this a lot, and what can we do to keep neighborhoods clean? And so there was a tremendous effort here related to consistent picking it up, if it's back on the ground, get it up again. And then, as you can see, over an extended amount of time, they've done significant work. They cut 182 lots in this barrier footprint. The bags of litter you picked up was almost 17, 80. They cut and treated 183 blocks detailed, as you see the number there. Loads of debris is a lot of times, potholes repaired, 196. Alley's cut and tree, or 25, and trees removed, five. It's Abbott, I'm pretty sure there's a valid explanation for those five. If you could, go to the next slide. So then we talk about the Department of Transportation and traffic calming. I think this is a very important conversation to add to, how do you make a neighborhood safer, particularly for pedestrians who are walking, children playing? Slowing down, speeding in a residential area, I think this is very critical here. And so they created nine new four-way stops, paved two streets, seven speed cushions, and the striving, believe it or not, was extremely helpful just to, not just aesthetics, but making sure people knew where crosswalks were for children walking, seniors, elders, et cetera. So this traffic calming effort has tended to be very helpful. To go to the next slide, we didn't get into the public safety, crime piece of this. A lot of this was rooted in, can we make a neighborhood safer? Can we decrease crime? The information we collected tells us yes. In this pilot program window, we seized over, we seized right at 20 firearms. As you see, for this one area, that has a significant amount of traffic tickets over this 190-day window. Majority of this has occurred on Second Avenue South. Unfortunately, residents want to treat this like a super speedway, and it's not. And so through multiple efforts, BPD lit it up and gave out a significant amount of traffic tickets. I think I've shared it with you. I've definitely heard it from the residents, a significant amount of homes, unfortunately, in this area were drug houses, trap houses, dope houses, et cetera. So we've been able to identify a minimum of five of them through the drug nuisance abatement and get them under a nuisance or a drug nuisance. And then there were actual criminal arrests. And so unfortunately, this area has always suffered from high prostitution for some reason. But we've, there was a concerted effort on the Johns as well as the operation of prostitution going on. So there were many things in operations over these, over this course of window of time. This 159 is not isolated to just prostitution and Johns. It's also a lot of other things that consisted, drug activity as well as those who may have had warrants and other things as well. If you go to the next slide, I want to compare year to year as it relates to calls for services and ShotSpotter. The whole idea of collecting this information, again, is can we be in a position to decrease crime? One of the ways you can track that is by 911 calls and/or you can track by ShotSpotters detecting a number of shots. Did we stop all gun shootings? No. Did we decrease them significantly? The answer is yes, as well as calls for services, as you can see, was a decrease as well. If you could, go to the next slide. I'm almost done, actually. So I wanted to talk about public safety resources here. Again, there was the Special Operations Bureau that included the Patrol Bureau, East Precinct Task Force, Citywide Traffic Task Force, Tactical Motor Scouts, and significant others. That's how you got that over 1,000 tickets. And then tapping into the real-time crime center, able to deploy additional resources in the form of cameras, license plate readers, et cetera, has been tremendous and helpful. And then code enforcement with BPD, along with PEP have worked, done a great job of identifying those abandoned structures where illegal activity could happen. I have an extra sheet here that was excluded, not on purpose, but I want to read some more stats. 2023 compared to 2024, auto death decreased in this area by 50%. 2023 to 2024 burglary reduced in this area by 40%. We told you all about D-NAT. They had non-D-NAT properties were identified, all had search warrants executed on them. Again, those were the drug houses or nuisance homes. Two were sold out of those nine, and then one housing authority tenant was evicted. If you're going, go to the next slide. So this is the part where I think a lot of the residents had an interest in, and we do as well. I've expressed the residents twice at town hall meetings, those who came to their doors. We've expressed this at the neighborhood meetings, and then we've expressed it to you before in this setting. The current barriers you see were always temporary. If the majority of the residents, and through your vote, decided that we could move from a pilot to a permanent vacation of these streets, then we would have to come back before this council as well to the residents to say, what do permanent barriers look like? As you can see, these are just four different examples. Again, what you currently have was always temporary. From an aesthetically pleasing standpoint, we want something to blend in and complement the neighborhood. That's one. Two, it deserves to be beautified. And three, it just has to work for residents. And so I think BPD, Department of Transportation, will be in the best position, you know, to find which works. But it'll be centered around 14 road closures, two bump outs, four bollards each, as you can see, six alley closure locations. And those consist of heavy-duty guardrails that you can see here. And then each bump out, you can see the size and scope, as well as planning, concrete, paving, et cetera. Be a little bit over half a million dollars. And then the timeline for this would be eight to 10 months if we decided to move forward based on the feedback you hear today. I want to close out. Is there another slide? I want to close out. That is the last slide. I want to close out and say a few things before I turn this public hearing back over to you, Mr. President and Council. One, I want to thank the team. I want to thank Alicia Lumpkin. I want to thank Latoya Walker. They had different roles in this, but they were complemented by a significant amount of team members, department heads, as well as deputy department heads. Then team members on the ground every day in BPD, PEP, Community Development, Public Works, and a host of other departments that I have not named, literally getting at this work on a daily, weekly, monthly basis to make sure we can collect information and be in the best position to present it back to not only the public and the residents, but present it back to you. This could not have happened without the permission, this pilot program would have not done it without the permission of the residents, the feedback of the residents. That process continues today in the form of, we sent direct mail to residents, we went back and knocked on doors, we sent out this neighborhood meetings as much information as we can to tell residents over the last 191 days, how has this experience been for you? What I'm going to imagine is you'll hear both sides. You'll hear residents say they like it. You'll hear residents say they don't like it. I believe this pilot program had more positives and more net benefits than it did negative for residents. I do acknowledge inconvenience, but the choice of public safety and the biggest desire of residents feeling safe, of seniors sitting on their porches, of parents feeling safe for their children to play outside, and less of an opportunity for people to drive in their neighborhoods, shoot at our homes, easily drive out. In those situations, we've accomplished tenfold. And I think those things outweigh inconvenience, if you would. And I just hope that we have a productive, healthy conversation today, and I yield the floor, turn it over to you, Mr. President, to hear actually from our residents. Thank you all so much. And of course, I'm available for any questions in detail you have, as well as those two young ladies I mentioned, as well as all the department heads and deputies, if you have any detailed questions you want to ask on some of the information that's been shared.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any questions from the council? Councilwoman Clark?
I just want to applaud you for being innovative, because I don't, you know, I think this is thinking outside the box. I have had concerns about the attractiveness of the barricades, and you've addressed that.
Yeah, they're not pretty.
Yeah. And so I think the attractiveness is one thing. I think knowing that, you know, our public safety personnel can still respond to emergencies effectively without, you know, having the response times be increased significantly, I think we need to study that, you know? And then how the mapping, like when we look for something on GPS, how, if we go to more permanent, you know, closures on these streets, how long does it take for, you know, Google to update GPS maps so that you're not running into dead ends and, you know? So I would think my biggest issues are emergency response, but also, you know, will this affect property values positively or negatively? Because on one hand, you know, kids can play safely in the streets because... Because it, on one hand, you know, kids can play safely in the streets because the only thing that can come through that street is going to be a pedestrian or bicycle, you know? So that could be a benefit if people have small children because, you know, having to, you know, get out of the street for your kickball game, you know? If, if kids even play that anymore, I don't know.
So I can answer all those.
But, yeah.
I think your first point is extremely important. Prior to us starting this in July, everybody, three of the most important, um, teams had to be the fire department, it had to be the police department, and it had to be the Department of Transportation. Why? Well, transportation is going to know, like, in recommendation, what streets should we close as well as how does this impact everything? How does it impact public transportation in the form of the transit buses that need to still get through this neighborhood community? Um, how does it impact the school, which is Barrett Elementary? And fire department, you literally have, um, Fire Station Twelve and forgive me for not knowing the other one on the Porto Madrid number. Uh, but this area is literally anchored by two fire stations. Um, how does that affect response time? And so that was extremely important going through that process first. And then when it started, making sure, tracking the information, um, did it cause any significant impact negatively as it relates to response time, call time, emergency situations, paramedics in or fire? The answer is no. Um, Chief Moon can speak to that if more information is needed. Um, we did the same for police as well. You asked about the property value. Uh, we haven't been pleased with the property value in this area. We've seen over time over the last forty years, this decrease. I think this has the opportunity, um, to actually increase it. Uh, here's why. One, a vehicle can still get on every street. They just can't enter on every street, if that makes sense. Uh, one of the main interest thoroughfares is Second Avenue. Second is open all the way through on both sides. But we closed it off the main interest point on First Avenue more on purpose. Uh, what we noticed was that Division First South had a higher form of crime. It had a higher concentration of prostitution. It had a higher concentration of abandoned properties. It had a higher concentration of drug nuisance abatements. Second Avenue, one of the biggest issues on Second was it had a higher form of speeding. Um, but it's also a major thoroughfare. And so we, we dealt with that on the policing end. And so, yes, um, in answering your questions, oh, the last piece, GIS.
Yeah.
Um, I believe they will be in a position right away, um, post whatever decision you make if you decide to make it permanent. Um, I think they will be in a position at max thirty days, um, to get that going. So this can be seen on the map.
Well, I, I really like this neighborhood. I think it has a lot of potential to stabilize and really be great. And, um, if, um, if things change from the, you know, well, I would hope things would change. And this neighborhood really becomes, you know, a very stable community of choice with low crime, walkability, all these things. Would we look at reversing it sometime in the future? You know, I, I know if we spend the, we're spending money and the capital improvements have a lifespan. But we could, you know, I think we could look at reversing this at some point.
Yeah, so.
Ten, fifteen years down the road, if it just doesn't make sense anymore.
Yeah, I think you all that. So I can answer that two ways. I mean, you know this better than I do. But you look at residential neighborhoods uh, outside the city limits of Birmingham, or a few in Birmingham, actually, that were developed, let's say in the nineteen nineties and beyond. They don't have forty, fifty, sixty entrance, entrance exit points. They have ma- maybe like max one to four. And what that allows is less opportunity for people to be able to just easily drive in, commit some type of crime, whether it's a misdemeanor felony or ordinance violation and easily drive out. It does. I mean, those, it's easier to monitor in the form of cameras because there's less entrance exit points. Um, and it's just, you know, this area is, residents feel more empowered. Um, it's less speeding, it's less traffic, it's a host of benefits for fewer entrance exit points. Uh, I'm not going to say that's led to a, I'm not going to say that's led to an increase in crime in Birmingham. Uh, what I will say, there's a correlation though, as it relates to people's ability to easily drive in, commit crime and easily drive out. So that's the first way I answered. To your point, I do believe that we always want to empower the residents. I mean, they're here. I can't, I need to stop talking so they can speak. Uh, but I'm still willing to answer all your questions. The point I'm making is if the residents decide, well, yeah, we'll try a permanent, you say, we'd like the, we'd like what exists. We want a different look on permanent, fifteen, twenty years from now, the same generation or their children or their grandchildren may say, we want something different. And I think as a mayor and council, we should be open to that. We should always be flexible and yield to, um, the majority of the voices in that neighborhood because they're the people that most feel empowered. The, the residents most impacted and the people that actually live there.
The only thing I want to say is, you know, as you were speaking, I thought about, you know, suburban gated communities as you were talking and, you know, that just makes me want to throw up. But anyway.
Yeah.
I saw it from that.
We're not, we're not speaking to, we're not speaking to gated.
I know, I know, but I was thinking about how modern subdivisions, you know, they, they're, they're different from the urban fabric. And so, you know.
Majority of them are not all gated though. So let, let me be clear what I'm speaking to. When I say one to four entrances, entrance exit points, they're not all gated. Majority are not.
I know, they're not all gated, but.
Are not gated.
Yeah. But it simulates, it simulates that.
I'm strictly speaking to the number of entrance exit points. In this case, we have over forty and we only close nineteen.
Right. And, and I'm, all I'm saying is, you know, urban fabric is different from that. And, you know, it's what I love personally, but, you know, we'll, we'll hear everything that needs to be said and make a decision.
Councilor Abbott?
Wow, this works. Um, is, will this model spread to other neighborhoods where we're having issues?
If the residents want it, yes. I do believe, we talked about, um, we've talked about another neighborhood in District Six. I won't name it yet, but, um, I would tell you, there were two neighborhoods, y'all, we, we identified, um, that had the highest form of gun violence in twenty twenty-three. So this conversation about this started in twenty-three. We didn't start the pilot program to summer of twenty twenty-four. Uh, there was a simple question posed to the police department. Uh, what are the highest two beats or highest two areas, highest two neighborhoods that have the highest form of gun violence? Gun violence in all forms, I'm not just talking homicides, I'm talking about shooting into occupied dwellings and, felony assaults where a person is shot, uh, but survived, shooting into occupied vehicles, et cetera, et cetera. There were two. Um, um, one was, um, South Precinct and the other was East Precinct. And in South and East, I forgive me for not knowing the beat numbers, but they end up being Eastlake and North Tittisville. And so this pilot program was intentionally chosen. When we went deeper into Eastlake, we started seeing all these other, we saw this other thread attached to gun violence. Uh, we saw the speeding, uh, we saw the blight, uh, we saw the illegal, a considerable amount of illegal dumping over and over. We saw the other infrastructure needs, uh, we saw, um, the prostitution, et cetera, the drug houses, et cetera. And so we could pilot this area and lean in with resources and then show actual positive results. Then could we move from, uh, temporary to permanent? I believe, Ms. Abbott, to your question, other residents and other neighborhoods will want this. If there's an opportunity to slow traffic down in the neighborhood, prevent and or decrease illegal dumping, other forms of, um, illegal activity, um, decrease shooting, et cetera. They feel their children can play outside and seniors can sit on their porch safely. I do believe other residents, other residential areas in Birmingham's, ninety-eight other neighborhoods will want this.
Well, I agree. I, I, I think that just the, the attractiveness of stopping cut-throughs through our neighborhoods where people really want to go to UAB and it's faster to rip through a residential neighborhood with the help of BDOT. And it would be good if we could have the help of BDOT to stop people from cutting through our residential neighborhoods to speed to the place they really want to go. So, but that doesn't have anything to do with crime except for speeding, it has to do with public safety. You know, and so it's not going to help neighborhoods that don't have a lot of gunfire. Just eliminating some apartment complexes would do that in my neighborhoods. But, um, I think this sounds good, that the idea that you can have a more peaceful, quieter neighborhood with less crime and less vehicles, you know, speeding through. You can't walk, you can't send your children out for fear that if the ball goes out in the street, they'll be run over. So, I mean, this sounds, I mean, we've, we've got to hear from the people who live there. But, um, but I think it sounds wonderful to just slow life down for people in residential areas.
Yes, ma'am. Council Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, like, um, my colleague, Ms. Clark said, um, I think this is innovative and thank you for, um, doing something different to address something that I think probably the can's been kicked down the road long enough and we really as a city have not done something that's fair to address, um, certain things that are going on in this neighborhood. My concern, uh, I don't, maybe perhaps it's more, more of a question or concern, I'm not really sure, is that, you know, when this has been going on, I believe that there were not any homicides in that area. And I don't know if that's correct or not, but if you just look at the map of where homicides have taken place over this past year, it did not, it did not appear that there were any in there. I don't know if my, you know, if I looked at it right on the computer or not, but it did not appear that there were any in there, perhaps there was. But then if you look on the other side of, of Porto.
Southeast Lake.
Yeah.
You say, and then in the, in your community, Eastlake, Southeast Lake and Northeast Lake. Southeast Lake in District Two has had more homicides than Northeast Lake in District Four and more than Eastlake in District Five.
Yeah. And so that's of concern. And while, you know, when, when we look at the, when, when I got the, the, the email from Rick Journey with the presentation and the ShotSpotter data, to be honest, I was a little disappointed. We were still over eight hundred shots fired during the, during this period while we've had this in place. To me, that seems like a, a large number.
Please include December thirty-first. Celebratory gunfire.
Okay.
Please.
Okay.
I mean, you know, it was crazy.
Yeah, yeah, it, it was crazy. Um, but my, I guess my question is this. It, it is obvious from the presentation that there was a, a specific enforcement effort done in this neighborhood. Where it was touted, you know, the twenty guns, the hundred and fifty-ish arrest, you know, that kind of data. And those amount of blocks is, 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 um, a considerable enforcement effort. I, I, in my opinion, how about that? I would like to see what we can do with that type of enforcement effort across from a Porto without putting barricades in the streets.
So I will share with you, um, Council Williams, that I think that's not only fair. But first of all, I owe you some more information. We've been talking about sitting down, talking about some of those things on policing. So I owe you a conversation more. Don't mind sharing it publicly. Two, we've identified some areas, um, Southeast Lake being one and two being Eagle Noak. Um, Eagle Noak had a second homicide yesterday. I just shared this with the team this morning that in less than thirty days, there's been a second homicide in the Eagle Noak neighborhood at a different abandoned structure. We saw a weird pattern in Southeast Lake that's not necessarily similar around abandoned houses, but more so around what we call abandoned trap houses, et cetera. So there will be ample attention without barriers in those two neighborhoods. And I can show you better than I can tell you as it relates to, um, being in a position, once we roll that out, um, BPD can share results for, um, how we give both those neighborhoods the attention they need. And that's not just BPD, particularly for that area, identifying every abandoned structure. Because I told them I don't want to see another homicide at another abandoned structure in the same neighborhood. I want them all down. I want it all expedited. It's going to require your help to speed up the process and declare it all emergency. Because I deem the whole neighborhood at this point a public safety issue. Think you've got some similar issues, but they're actually residential. And so, uh, what you see with D-NAT, identifying those homes separate from BPD, um, if that requires up to the level of eviction, if we know drugs are being sold at the house, manufactured, distributed, whatever. Um, and so you'll see not just policing, but you'll see legal department as well and PEP.
Okay. And, and I guess my question is, and it sounds like that this is going to happen in Southeast Lake, since that was my example on the other side of the border, I mean, is, you know, with all things equal, is everything, you know, I guess rolling this out to other neighborhoods that I, I don't want it to be a cookie cutter response. Like, I don't want, you know, if, if, if Southeast Lake doesn't want, you know, their streets blocked, but they want certain other things like the increased code enforcement, which I think is a huge piece of it. I think that the traffic issues is a huge piece of it. And I think that targeted enforcement. And I think a lot of the homicides in Southeast Lake were narcotics related, as it appeared.
Majority, yes, sir.
And so, you know, that type of target enforcement, I think that, that, you know, I think all my neighborhoods want that. But anyway, I, I, my question is, with, with all things equal, you know, is there a difference is my question, without the barriers or shutting down the streets? I'm talking about the, the targeted enforcement, the code enforcement piece, PEP, you know, that ki- type of city involvement. I mean, it, it yielded, it yielded results. Um.
I think, I think that, um, if I use this Southeast Lake and Eagle Noak, for example, I do think without barriers, you can see results based on identifying actual hotspots, identifying, um, the certain street that people always speed on, identifying the houses where illegal activity are happening and use various departments, not just the police department. The answer is yes. And you'll see it. Again, the Crown Commission report that we shared last week, literally, the immediate, the immediate action is twofold. Um, that you all agree with. One is identifying the people, persons, um, or organizations, um, that need attention. And then the other is actually identifying hotspots. We've since literally have identified based on, um, the increase of murder and homicides in the, in the East Precinct, Southeast Lake, um, as well as the issues we've identified in Eagle Noak just literally over the last thirty days.
Tim Alexander?
Thank you, Mayor Woodson. I join my colleagues in applauding the effort and the goal of this particular project. So I thank you for the innovation and the opportunity to say, let's look at this from a different, in a different landscape. Um, the things though that I did want to ask, when I was looking at the report that you provided us, environmental code enforcement, public safety, traffic calming, um, these are things we ask for in each of our neighborhoods every day. And so I want to understand, and I really want to hear from the public, when we talk about inconvenience versus safety. I want to find out, does this model have to always support closing off certain entry points? Is that truly, when we talk about cause and effect, lowering, what did you do? Uh, nineteen of forty entry points, so you almost took half of the entry points out of that particular neighborhood and closed them off, right? Is there a cor- correlation with that? You feel that that is strong correlation outside of these things that we tend to have concentrated on, again, that we respect every day?
So, yes, ma'am, Madam Pro-Tim, if you, we got here in twenty twenty-three for a single family neighborhood because we actually, we, as in the housing authority, tried this twice in two separate, um, public housing sites where they had over five hundred units. Now, they didn't have forty entrance, forty entrance exit points, but I know one of them had over twenty. And we got to a high level of homicides in drive-bys in one of them. And there was a thought was, the thought was, can And there was a thought was, the thought was, can you decrease? People's ability to just drive in, shoot, and easily drive out? And it turns out, when they tried this in that public housing site, um, homicides, drive-bys, and shootings just literally dropped. And then we saw, I don't know if it was a year and a half later, or two years later, in a separate public housing site in District Four, um, the first one was in District Five. And, oh man, it was wild for a second. And we talked to HAB leadership, they pulled in um, Department of Transportation, they pulled in BPD, the Fire Department, same process, well before this. And says, can we decrease the ability of all these entrance exit points where people are driving in, shooting, easily driving out? Uh, we saw homicides and shootings and drive-bys, et cetera, decrease in that area as well. So the notion was, well, can you try this in a single-family neighborhood for homeowners? Well, the first thing you needed was permission, or at least implicit permission, buy-in feedback from residents. And from the majority of those residents, which we provided that information for you, they said, yes, that's how we got here. So, do I believe there's a correlation? Yes ma'am. The things you all are also asking for, more traffic calming, we put that in the submitted budget. More blight removal, we put this in the submitted budget. Um, we put the additional code enforcement focal in there, plus, plus the warrants that are APOC certified. I think they can show in twenty twenty-four compared to your complaints in twenty twenty-three, that there was an increase in more aggressiveness and holding people accountable for those violations. Citywide, not just this one neighborhood.
Thank you. Um, so, Mr. Mayor, the item that's before us today is uh, an ordinance authorizing the project to continue indefinitely. So, um, as I understand it, um, in order to do the permanent closures, um, there would need to be some, you know, we, we, we've used the word vacation, but if we construct the closures as you proposed, those, that would still be public right of way. So, in order to get to that type of um, more aesthetically pleasing closure, what would be the, the next step?
So we have to come back before you, um, there will be a bid process, um, B-DOT will walk it out. Uh, we have to come before the Transportation Committee, have to go before the residents that you see here again. Actually, a good place to start would be him first, I apologize. We start with the residents first, um, to get their feedback and input on what we think is best, showing them options. Have another town hall style meeting, um, do the direct mail again, um, do the neighborhood meetings again. Go door to door again, saying this will be the permanent, dah 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 dah, get their feedback input.
Okay.
Go from there, B-DOT will package that up, probably present it to me. We'll go through a process, um, get that before you, if you approve, then it goes to B-DOT, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
So we, bottom line, we have to come back before, um, the residents, as well as come back before the council.
Okay. So, I do uh, represent the East Lake Neighborhood, it's in District Five. But um, and I do have some thoughts that I'd like to share, but I first want to hear from the residents who showed up this morning. So, at this time, we're going to start our public hearing. Um, if you're here to speak for or against uh, this item, uh, we'd like to ask you to queue up on our right, your left. Uh, over here, you'll have three minutes um, to speak. And I think that we'll have a timer displayed on the monitors behind us. Um, please remember, when you come up to the mic, to state your name and address, and uh, we'll have our first speaker, please. Yep, just come on up to the mic, remember to state your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Yes, my name is.
Hold the mic down to you, please.
Okay, uh, good morning, uh, city council members, Mr. Mayor. My name is Michael Loreno, I own Contra Brothers Gift Baskets in East Lake. Uh, my family started that business in nineteen fifty-seven. Uh, we started that business in a little three thousand square foot building. Now we occupy over twenty-two thousand square foot in buildings, sixty-nine oh nine, sixty-nine eleven, and sixty-nine thirteen, First Avenue North. Uh, I'm the last family man, uh, a family member uh, living, unless my kids want it, and I don't think they do. One wants to be a doctor, one wants to be a football coach. So, um, we had three businesses in Birmingham, one in Vestavia, one in uh, Greystone, and the one on First Avenue. As our business model changed, we decided to close other businesses. And we made a decision in two thousand and twelve to close those businesses because our model was changing. And we had a decision to make, either go to Greystone with our business, go to Vestavia, or stay in Birmingham. And my uncle and my father, who started this business, told us, told me, said, no, we're staying in Birmingham. Where we started, that's where we're gonna end up. And um, I've been around since my mom would pick me up at Saint Paul's Elementary School and bring me out there, work with my dad and my uncle. I've seen East Lake in its good times, and I've seen East Lake in its bad times. And after my dad and my uncle passed away, I thought about moving the business because it got to the point where it was a year ago. But what has taken place with the uh, traffic barriers has been the most positive shot in the arm for East Lake that I've seen since what I can remember as, back as a kid. So I am for the barriers. Um, it has greatly reduced, our parking lot is a hundred and fifty feet wide, it has two entrances. There was a tremendous amount of cars cutting through our parking lot to get onto Division. That has eliminated it ba- basically down to zero. So that has helped tremendously, just keeping the riffraff, basically, if not a better word, out of our parking lot. And people walk into our parking lot, checking out my, I have thirteen employees, there's thirteen cars out there. Walking past every car, looking to, in it, in each one, checking the handle. So, I applaud this move, I do not, I do not want to see it go away. Because if we, I, really, if it goes away, we're just gonna go right back to where we were before it was in place. So, um, I'm gonna have to leave early and get out of, get back to the shop. I wanted to be the first up here to say, I'm for it, and don't take it up, apply more if necessary, because it is, I've seen it. I go there every day, and is it a con- inconvenience sometimes? Yeah, hey, man, we work around it, because it's for the better of the neighborhood and um, my business. And um, and I'm proud to say, we're the only business since nineteen fifty-seven, when we got in business out there, that our buildings have never been vacant. There's been a lot of vacancies up and down First Avenue, but our three buildings have never been vacant, and we're proud of that, and uh, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning, my name is Brenda Jones, I, my address is six-six-one Seventy Second Street South. I live in the East Lake Neighborhood, my husband and my children, I've been living there forty years. And I am so thankful for this program. It has literally been an answer to prayer. I have been praying for years for change to take place. Um, we have experienced so much gun violence, um, literally, at least one, one dead, week, sometime twice a week. They just shooting so bad, and it gets so loud that we literally think that it's in our front yard. I would scream to my daughter, get on the floor, you know, to my husband, you know, literally. He would be in another room, get on the floor, because we did not know if the bullets were gonna come into our house. And when the mayor, he um, called us residents together at the Star Church, I was shouting, I said, God, you hear us, you, you really hear the cries of your people in this neighborhood? That this has got to stop, it makes you want to leave the neighborhood. So, and I was so thankful also that after we left the meeting, immediately to me, you know, change started taking place. You know, the, uh, the mayor had a four-way stop sign uh, put in, I think it's on London Avenue and between Seventy-third and Seventy-fourth Street. Because those people, they would drive over that hill in ridiculous speed, and you could barely make it through. It was only a two-way stop sign there. But now they have installed a four-way stop sign, and it's a life changer for us. And I can honestly say that the gun, we don't hear shots anymore. The only time that we heard shots was on New Year's Eve, you know, when people were, you know, celebrating. But after that, I mean, we, I was so thankful. The first day I saw them come in, um, they were like, I told my husband and my daughter, they came in in these white vans, and when the door opened, all these people, they were coming out, and they had their little flyers in their hand, and they were going from door to door. And I'm like, oh Lord, help is here, help is here. So, I am definitely for the program. I have seen just tremendous change, I feel safe. I'm not afraid to go in my front yard, my backyard, I'm not afraid for my grandchildren to come out now because someone may be driving by to shoot them. I have literally not seen any, the ladies of the night, I don't, I don't, you know, want to say anything ugly about them, but I have not seen them in the streets anymore. So, I am thankful for this program, and I am definitely for it. And my hat's off to the mayor and all of his people for everything that you all have done. And I encourage you, please vote for it, because we don't need to go backwards, we need to go forward.
Good morning, I'm Eugene Yatard, and I reside at seven-one-two-two, Second Avenue South. Mayor Woodson, I commend you for the young ladies that came out, everything that I asked them for, they came back within two weeks and fixed it. The only thing I've had issue with is the water. Um, we have a big, huge water issue, and we can't get anything from the uh, Water Works Board. I've lost five cars out there, and um, being out there with the traffic, I was so happy to see that extra stop sign. Then I would say it went away, because now this, they're back. But I'm for the program and keep doing a great job, thank you.
Hello, my family has lived in East Lake for over thirty years.
Please pull the mic down.
Can you hear me now? And um.
And state your name and address, please.
My name is Asaltawain, and my address is seventy-five seventeen Division Avenue. Um, when the barricades came, we didn't have a say, um, well, they had a meeting, nobody knew about the meeting on our street. Um, they, all we knew is they were coming to move the barricades in. And although they have um, been beneficial in stopping a lot of the speeding, um, they still present a false sense of security, because I, I still hear shooting from time to time. There's a night spot a block away, um, that's full of uh, traffic. Um, there's a CBD store also on the front of First Avenue, um, those things in the community, um, it just kind of changes things. I know the um, the night ladies have kind of cut out because they've shut down one of those um, adult theaters that was on First Avenue, which is a good thing, but um, there's still a lot of foot traffic. Um, people knocking on your door, um, begging for money. Um, a lot of um, trash still, I have to pick up trash every day from um, blowing from through the neighborhood. There's still a lot of trash on my street. I think, and that it could be better, um, if they install more lights, more cameras, more speed bumpers to slow down that traffic. And um, on where we live is on the end, so I know he says there are um, several ways to get in and out, but on our street, it's not but one way to get out. And I feel like if they were going to keep that up, um, maybe put like a security gate where residents on that particular block have a key fob to get in and out. I've had issues with response times from the Fire Department, um, and not since the barricades have been up. But my main concern is I care for my grandmother, and I do worry about if something really happens, what is that going to look like uh, with them getting in? If it took them that long to get in, when nothing, when the barricades were not up? So, I, I mean, if you're gonna keep it up, um, make sure that we can get in and out. But otherwise, um, it presents a false sense of security for our family.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Good morning, my name is James Jones, I teach at Beard Elementary School. In addition to my teaching duties, I am the safety officer and the traffic officer for the school. As in most communities, you know, the school is sort of the anchor of that community, and our school is no different. And I would hope that the uh, the children and the parents and the people who interact with our school every day would be a priority uh, for everyone here and for everyone in the community, and I think it is. But uh, prior to the initiative that the mayor initiated uh, this summer, uh, the only way I can describe traffic around our school is complete chaos. Uh, the barriers uh, have allowed us to, as me, if you, if you go to the school any, anytime during the day, you're gonna see me in the street. I probably spend more time in the street than probably anybody around the community. And I'm, I'm there in the mornings, early, rain, sleet, snow, this morning was freezing. But um, I'm out there with those parents and getting those kids in that school, and our, along with our security officer, Officer Hill. But uh, uh, I don't know if you're familiar with how the school works, but we have a traffic light that's at the end of our, of the main road in front of the school, which the mayor has made one way now, there's only one way in. And uh, which has uh, eliminated so many problems. The barriers, uh, again, prior to the initiative, in the afternoons, people would come, it didn't matter, they'd come through the grass, they'd come through the church's chicken parking lot, however they could get to the school, they came, completely unmanageable, completely in, in dangerous for those kids. Kids, you know, don't pay attention, parents don't pay attention. Uh, uh, it is, it was sometimes uh, uh, in the afternoons, uh, critical that we, we had, hand-delivered those kids to their, to their cars in, in the past, prior to the initiative. But now, it's controlled, it's calm, it's easy in and out. Uh, uh, in the past, you know, parents that would come there, our residents in the neighborhood, they wanted to come through during those times during the day, we'd use the sidewalk as a street, it happened three or four times a, a month, people would just drive the sidewalk. A lot of times, people don't honor uh, normal traffic laws in that community, stop signs, uh, one-way streets, they just, they just don't pay attention to them. But since the initiative has, has been in place, all that has changed, the culture of our school has changed. I know you don't see that, but the parents appreciate what's being done. I know I don't work for the city, city council, but indirectly, I'm a representative of you. They see me in the street, and it makes a difference to those parents, I, I promise you, they recognize what's going on. They see what you're doing, and they appreciate it, and the culture in our school has changed. The temperature way down, you know, parents go from zero to a hundred in two seconds, that changes. Because they, they know that uh, what we're doing is in the best interest of their kids, and their kids is like touching their eyeball. You know, it's a very sensitive subject, and believe me, what you're doing is a great thing, especially for that, for that, for the school and for the blocks around the school, and I appreciate you letting me speak. I gotta go back to school, I got kindergartners that are climbing the wall, and so my principal's on me, so I'm, I'm sorry I have to leave, but I appreciate you letting me speak, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, thank God for every day. My name is Walter Umarani, I'm the president and owner of the Crescent Cultural Community Center and a citywide advocate to reduce crime and violence. I want to say to the beautiful people of East Lake, you know, I'm from New Orleans originally, and that's a pretty decent neighborhood, from what I saw. And the isolations have been proven to be effective when we've been having problems. And I know it's an inconvenience because it's a deviation from what we've been used to. We've been accustomed to coming in and out as we please with all of the intersections. The area in New Orleans where I lived, it was called Tall Timbers, there was only two entrances in. The area in New Orleans where I lived, it was called Tall Timbers. There was only two entrances in that subdivision from General De Gaulle and Woodlawn. And it was the safest and most quietest subdivision in New Orleans. So I know it's an inconvenience, but please, we have to give the process time to prove itself. I'm just asking for the residents to have some, some patience. I know it's something that's been taken away from you. The access. Most of the affluent neighborhoods, there's only one entrance. As a matter of fact, you got a guy at the gate asking you where the hell you going? So please, give the process a little time. And before I sit down, thank you, Mayor, for that uh infrastructure bipartisan thing with the apprenticeship program. We need that. I was a construction representative for several companies. And when the contractors come, they got a scope of work they got to get done that day. The bids are tight and it's hard to find talented workers. So to bring on apprentices, the extra talent is crucial. Thank you for my ad libbing.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I wanna help with that.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Toni. Um, and I reside on Third Avenue, um, in Eastlake. Um, I'm against the barriers um in multiple things. Um, there's a few concerns that I have. Um, I know there was a mention of property value. I do um think that this could increase our property taxes and it's not of incon- uh, of convenience to us. Um, also, I feel like the barriers have not resolved um much of the violence. I don't know about everyone else, but I hear shooting every day. We were a part of a shooting, a drive-by shooting in December, um, with no resolution. Um, they send the violence to the other streets. So you blocked off Second, however, the violence came to Third. Um, also, the cameras, they may be helpful for us taking violations and things being sent. But they also, um, they feel like invasion. Um, we are the citizens. We're supposed to do, we do feel safe. However, we feel extra watched from, you know, when you're not doing anything wrong. Um, also with the stop signs, people want them down. There is so many times that the stop signs have been replaced or is even one missing going up the hill toward um the hill crest. Because they're gonna drive over them if they want to. Um, so I don't feel like that really has stopped anything. Um, we have personally been told of the hardship for the police and the fire departments to get through to us as residents, even if it hasn't been um documented on that end um as well. Um, I also feel like the, the, the one-way out, like Second Avenue, I personally had to drive down there the other day. And it's, there's no driveway. So there's cars on each side and it's hard for us as residents to get, even get back out. There's no turnaround. So we had, I literally had to back all the way up. And, and that's not safe. If cars on both sides and someone else is coming back in, we're literally stuck. Um, but my biggest concern, like I said, is really just the, the gunshots hasn't stopped. It's a daily thing. I'm part of the neighborhood on my camera. And people are saying that just last night, they're hearing shots next to their homes. You think ducking down is safe, however, we had bullets come into our home floor and top just recently in December. Kids and everything in our home. So I just also like it really has helped us. Um, and that is the best option.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Ursula Walker. I live on Seventieth Street in Eastlake. Um, I don't agree with the barriers um because I don't, I don't see the the safety with, with our response teams getting in fast enough. I had an incident at my home uh less than ten days ago where I have four bullet holes in my home. My home insurance don't cover gang violence or whatever the case may be. I have to come up with a way to make those repairs myself. I have bullet holes in my living room. I got bullet holes in my kitchen. They came all the way through to my laundry room. The police that came on that, that uh event when that happened never returned to my home to give me a police report. Never was concerned about my family. Nothing has been done about it since then. I stay in the new Cascade area. Um, I've been there seven years now. Um, and on my section, it's supposed to be a dead end. Nobody should be able to come through there, but there's nothing posted. We have these barricades on the street, but there's no barricade there. That car drove through that, that area and stopped at the end of my house and whoever was shooting at them continued to shoot at them. And, and I, I don't, I don't feel no safer with the barricades. I'm scared to go in my backyard because I can't see through my fence. So I don't know if they, they shooting um. December the thirty-first, it was, I know we hear gunshots all the time, but that was the worst for me. After just getting my house shot up, after I'm, I'm, I'm mending holes, I'm duct taping cords, it shot through our television cords and DVD cords and that's low in, in my couch. They, the, the police never, I'm on my way there after I leave here, never came back to check on me and my family. Never finished the report. Nothing has come of this situation. And, 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 and they say that they can't get through. So are they using the barricades as an excuse to take more time to get to places that need to be get, getting to? Two weeks after the barricade was put in, I, I noticed a house burned nearly to the ground because the fire department could not get through. They had to get out. They had to remove the barriers. They had to get in because and, and it's, it's, it's sad because it's only like three or four houses on that block. So it's all basically vacant, but you put everybody else on there in danger. And um, I, I, I apologize because I'm, I'm still kind of upset about this. Um, I, I don't see where it, where, where it's making it any safer. I almost lost my life in Gate City. And that's what caused me to move to Eastlake, um, new housing development. And, and another start. And um, and I was told um something bad in that situation that if it happened again and I did not die by gunshots, that they would help me move. Well, my God helped me move and I'm still being protected because bullets ran through my kitchen while I was standing there hiding behind my deep freezer.
Could you please wrap up your comments? Your time's up.
I'm done. They ain't no good.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hey, my name's Charles Paudler, seven five one five, Second Avenue South. Uh, five years there. I'm just here because I support the initiative. Um, I walk my dogs around the neighborhood. It feels like a neighborhood. I see less trash. We've gotten the trash cans. I know barricades aren't gonna stop bullets, but you gotta do something. So something's about the nothing. Um, I'm just here because I wanna say, yes, keep them, please. Thank you. Keep picking ass.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Bianca Young. I live in the seventy-second block of Division. Whereas some people will have wonderful experiences with the barriers, we have not. The reason why is because barriers create hotspots. I spent a lot of time growing up in San Antonio, Texas, larger population, big gang, big violence, things like that.
Can you speak up a little bit, please?
Sure. So what barriers do is they create hotspots, which means there's areas that see higher crime. And then there are areas who think, you know, it is the best thing ever. In my, on my street, we hear guns. We see people on foot. We have people shooting at each other. And there are times when I can walk my dog through the neighborhood. There's no issues. There's no problems. However, I can't get anything delivered like groceries to my house. Um, entertaining at my house and doing things with family has become more difficult. Because first of all, barriers are blight. They do say that you live in a certain area with certain crimes, with certain problems. And that's not okay. Our neighborhood, especially on our street, has a lot of seniors. Which means I'm not the only person who can't get my grocery deliveries. But I can drive. I can ride a bus. I can do things. People who are homebound can't do any of that. So they have to depend on other people. And so making it difficult for Uber drivers, Lyft drivers, anyone to get to people, it's not just an inconvenience. For someone who lives in a, you know, marginalized area, it is, it makes your lifestyle hard. And it doesn't need to be. In addition to that, I think the progress that we've seen is based on being aware. It's based on presence. It's based on, you know, having the homes fixed, making sure things are up to code, following the rules that we already have in place. Arresting people who have warrants out. Picking up guns from people who don't need them or shouldn't have them or are using them for violence. I don't understand why we can't use what we have and continue with the increased enforcement. Because I think that is what has made the difference. If there's no place for you to deal drugs out of blighted properties, you can't deal drugs. When you need to lose weight, you don't wire your jaw shut. You follow the guidelines that we have for diet and exercise. So that is what I'm asking that we do in this situation. And I'm asking that the barriers be removed. Like her, I can't get off my street. I have to drive four blocks back and go all the way down just to get to the pig, which means I'm more likely to, since I'm already back there, head to the Walmart, which is not great for our neighborhood stores or neighborhood businesses that are on First Avenue. I have two exits that I can't use and that nobody can use to get me. I have met um Uber eats drivers at the barriers to bring food in. On days I had my appendix out and on days that, you know, I shouldn't have even been up because, you know, we have to work. We have to, you know, we have to do things. So it's more than inconvenience. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Um, next speaker, please.
Good morning. Um, while I do appreciate the intent.
Yeah, your name and address, please.
My name is Rockwee Da Hendricks. I too stay on the seventy-two hundred block of Division Avenue. Um, while I do appreciate the intent and the innovation of our mayor, um, one of the main concerns that I have is not just the blocking of access for the citizens, but it also traps us in. Less than a week, the criminals that we are, the intended target had already found out a way to have a small arms attack at one of our neighbors. Um, as a matter of fact, that house got attacked two to three times in less than a week, shortly after those barriers were put up. Although the foot traffic of the ladies of the night and uh drug dealers may have decreased, again, it still leaves some of our citizens a little bit vulnerable. Um, specifically our elders uh that aren't as mobile and cannot, you know, move around or catch the bus or get access to a ride in and out of the area. Um, I also believe that, again, although the intent is beautiful, I think we're ignoring the root cause issue. And the root cause issue, um, if I remember, Mr. Whitman, you expressed that a lot of these crimes are being committed by young men. Right? Um, probably somewhere between the ages of, I'll say maybe fourteen and thirty, thirty-five. What they're missing is resources. They're missing mentors, outreach programs. They're missing a path that is different from the crime that they've seen, um, not just glorified, but exonerated in our media. So although, again, I appreciate the intent, um, I would like to challenge you all to maybe find a solution that isn't as great of an inconvenience and that actually speaks to the root cause issue, which is lack of resources, lack of programs, uh, lack of community outreach in that area. And as a citizen of that area, I would happily, if there's any way that we could help, I would love to work with you guys to make sure that that happens for our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Um, hi, my name is Rachel Reed. I live at seven three one five Sixth Avenue South. Sorry, can you hear me now? Um, having listened to everyone's concerns, um, I agree with both sides. I definitely think that the barriers have made a noticeable improvement. I've lived there for about two years now. Um, so I was there pre this installation and during. Um, it's a great idea. I don't think that it will solve everything and I think that that's where everyone's concerns come in. Um, because obviously it's not the whole fix. But the neighborhood seems to have been neglected for forty years. And so you're gonna have to spend a lot of money and time getting it back up to neutral. Um, I think that the idea that it will increase um property values as well as like the culture of the neighborhood will bring in businesses, will bring in other playground opportunities and other things that further along the initiative of safety and an environment where everyone wants to be together as opposed to hiding inside. Um, and so I guess ultimately I believe that the barricades should stay. Um, even if the money to make them look nice is actually allocated elsewhere to further improvement. Um, we don't need the prettiest things to be the fix, but we definitely shouldn't undo all of the really obvious evidence of help that it has done just because we aren't willing to further the initiative. Thanks so much.
Next speaker, please.
Hello. You guys hear me speak a lot. I don't live in Eastlake, but I, my name is Liz Reed. I live in Redmont or nineteen fifteen, Twentieth Avenue South. But I have children that attend um I three Academy, which is located at Saint Barnvis, which is off First Avenue. I have children at I three that's in the Woodlawn campus. I volunteer at the high school. I'm taking kids home all over the place, all through the city. I can tell you, for me, the barricades, I think they look fairly nice. It, the public art on it, like I know people complain, but I also notice a drastic dis- um, it has improved. I can say for me, I sit in car line at the middle school at least forty minutes a day. So my eyes are always on the streets, looking around, paying attention to what's around me. And I feel more comfortable picking up a book and reading while I'm waiting than I was in previous years. I, I know that's a simple comparison, but that's what I can offer. I can also say taking kids home, it hasn't prevented as much inconvenience as I think. I hear a lot of complaints and I, I see both sides, but for me, I have seen drastic improvements. I feel more safe. I know the kids feel safer when I take them home. They feel more safer. I see them more out on the streets playing and that is critical for kids to be involved on their streets, playing with their peers and not being afraid to go outside their doors. And that's what I say. And I was also, my degree was in criminal justice and we studied this in school. So I know traffic calming mechanisms such as this to reduce crime. It does take time to see long-term impact. But I do think that we are on the right track with, with having it in place. That's my opinion.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. I'm Reverend Larry Concorde, pastor, Householder Faith Church, seventy-five oh one Division Avenue. I've listened to a number of other residents who have complained about the barriers that ultimately were placed uh at Division Avenue. Initially, they were not a part of the plan. Um, the plan initially called for Seventy-fifth Street, seventy, uh, yeah, Seventy-sixth Street to be closed off. But once they started installing them, they decided to erect barriers. And if you look at the drawings that I am sharing with you all, uh, you can uh note that uh the one at um Division uh was added and I have um the legend down there, added to the plan out of the fact. And um, the one at Seventy-fifth Street was not included uh as one of the streets that was being closed off. When I first saw the plan, I thought that whoever designed it recognized that we had just opened the Dollar General. And then by uh keeping that street open, it allowed the residents to uh access that particular uh store without having to go outside of the perimeter. But since uh that was But since, uh, that was closed off, they have to go outside of the perimeter. Once they placed those barriers at Seventy-fifth Street, it impacted Householder Faith Church. We have a parking lot. Initially, the barriers, uh, at the, uh, north side of Division, and then individuals who were trying to get into the, uh, area would come through the parking lot, go, uh, um, I say drive over the concrete stops to get to Division Avenue. So I did, uh, speak with, uh, Ms. Walker about that, and, uh, ultimately they were moved back uh, to, uh, what, uh, she would describe as the alley. But what that did was expose our, uh, parking lot to the residents. Now, if they want to, uh, I guess, go to Dollar General, they come and park in the parking lot, get out, and then go to Dollar General. On January the second, um, we were in the parking lot, uh, helping my sister, Dr. Juliet Arrington, who we're gonna partner with. She's gonna op, uh, occupy that building, you know, that's adjacent to the parking lot. While we were doing that, a, a group of, uh, individuals, four of them in an SUV, came up and we were breaking down boxes, had a pile there. They decided just to pull over the, uh, the pile of boxes. I happened to come out. I went to the vehicle and asked them to politely move. Now, the script teaches you a self-answer term, so we wrapped. These were four individuals. They had two in their hand. One guy got out to go, uh, to, uh, Dollar General. And, uh, and, and eventually they moved. When my brother came out, they decided to pull back. But I, I share that story because that was providential. Here I am dealing with someone in our own parking lot because we've cut off access to Dollar General. I'm glad it was me, not one of my parishioners, not one of the neighbors, and my sister's operating in Michael's school. I'm glad it wasn't her or some of the students there. So what I'm asking, that if you all, uh, consider basically approving this, that there'll be some modifications made to the location of some of these barriers that have been barriers themselves. Now, as African-Americans, we've dealt with a lot of barriers, and obviously I felt that that could have been a better solution. I don't really agree with them, but I haven't pushed back. I basically listened to the neighbors to see what they had to say. But since that has occurred, we have been impacted as a church. I think about trying to have funs, things of that nature there. Uh, you're talking about, uh, weddings and just, uh, regular, you know, large church events. We basically are somewhat, um, I guess, closed in, and we do not have the, uh, ability to navigate the space like we need to. The members have been fine. When they park on Division, they have to back up, turn around to come out. They cannot, you know, uh, exit any other way. And so if you elect to do that, then I ask that you would consider, you know, really modifying the location of the barriers. And last of all, and I think, uh, Councilor Clark, I know I'm going over my time. You talked about, uh, basically, you know, if you do pass this, uh, you know, I guess, statute, whatever you may call it, can it be reversed? You know, my position is that as the numbers come down, uh, can we then remove the barriers? And the mayor, I know you have your, uh, uh, crime prevention committee, and I would ask that they would look at, you know, as you reach your goal, your threshold of reducing, you know, uh, the, uh, crime in the area, whether or not those barriers can be removed. I've been out there for twenty-eight years. They're a nice community, and, uh, you know, if we adopt this, then we're looking at this happening in other areas as a means of addressing the problems that we have. They are significant, but I ask that, uh, certainly that we, uh, would look, uh, a lot deeper, you know, into other solutions for addressing the needs that they, uh, would do have in the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Cockroy. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Elena Melton, and I reside on First South in the heart of the barricades. And I'm here as a resident, but most in my most important role as a mom. If my fourteen-year-old son could get out of school today, he would absolutely be here to speak, um, because he has far more opinions than I do about this subject. Um, and I think he would simply start by saying, thank you. Um, since we've lived in this area for the last four ye, almost five years, um, we've experienced what the safety officer talked about earlier, um, where we've had people literally jump the curb, park in our yard as they prepare to go get their children, dump their entire trash in our front yard, and that just simply has not happened since we have the barricade. So thank you. Um, our street has also been a Speedway. Uh, during the warmer months, some of my neighbors and I, we get out and we clean the block. And, uh, on one particular Saturday, my neighbor had to literally grab my child because somebody was flying down at about sixty, sixty-five miles per hour and literally almost hit him. The guy felt so convicted, he got out on his hands and knees and begged my child's for forgiveness. So he also knew that he was absolutely, um, in the wrong. My house has been shot into twice, um, before the barricades, once causing a leak in my roof. A second time, um, three bullets came into my son's bedroom. For the grace of God, he had just walked out of the room and into my room. His, his window was shattered, his bed was hit, and several of his toys, um, were hit. You could imagine, then, um, as a mom, the number of times that my child has walked in my room and said, Mom, should we get on the floor? Mom, this, this time we should call the police. And unfortunately, having to be the bearer of bad news when one of our neighbors was actually murdered, who was only a year older than he was. We haven't had this experience where people continue to shoot in the air and speed out since the bar, barricades. They used to happen three or four times a week. We got to a place that we would count. Uh, fortunately, we can't even count on one hand how many times folks are shot and, um, fled. We don't hear that speeding off anymore, so we're really grateful. I'm really sorry for my neighbors who don't have the same experience, but the barricades have been a welcome experience for us. We were literally on our way out the door, except for this pilot project. So I wanna be real clear. I am in favor of the project with barricades, because without the barricades, we would not see the difference that we see in our household. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Eva Johnson. I live at seventy-five twenty-three Division Avenue. Uh, I have pro and con about the barricade. If you, uh, when you looked at the, uh, outlook, the barricade is right at my home. Uh, I did have, um, thoughts about it being there in the beginning, but since it has been there, we can sleep at night. We don't have the traffic. Um, my son had two, one, two cars was hit in front of the house because of the speed. We don't have that anymore. And the only thing was my concern, and I think they already answered that, about the emergency, uh, the ambulance and the po, the police getting in there if there's something going on. That was one of my concern, because on, se, from Seventy-Fifth to, uh, Seventy-third, I think, is elderly people. And so a lot of times, you know, we have to call the ambulance, uh, the fire department. And my concern was, did they have a map or whatever, how to get to wherever we are? Uh, I did, um, one of the barriers right there by where the pastor was talking about. If you move that one, then you can come all the way down First Avenue and then come in, and you wouldn't have to just ride Second Avenue, because I haven't complained. I don't live on Second Avenue, but the people on Second Avenue have complained about the traffic. Uh, like I said, pro and con. I can sleep at night. I don't have the loud music. I don't have the cars speeding by. Uh, and for the school, it's great, because parents used to come flying down Division, not stopping for the kids crossing the street, and the cars passed by, uh, have eaten at church's chicken and throw the boxes out of your yard. So I'm not against the barricade. I just wish we could work something out where we can come down First Avenue so far instead of just riding up and down Second Avenue. But, um, I have had, seen a difference in the quietness, uh, and we can sleep at night. The loud music don't rock your house. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and the mayor has reached out to families by neigh, in the neighborhoods, but I would like to say, like, just like the, the pastor said, that barrier is right by Dollar General, because she lives on Division. She's trapped by the school, and then she has to go out to Second, all around Second, to see on the interstate. But if that barrier was moved right by Dollar General, that would allow her access to easily get to a school and easily get to the interstate. And again, the barriers have been wonderful. Uh, one of the things we talked, you already addressed about how ugly they look, you know, talking about the beautification of it. And then that would also, moving that barrier would also help the egress of nurses, if they have to get to her. So, because she's in the heart, she's in the heart of that barrier. So, thank you all for it.
Thank you. All right. I'm not seeing anyone else. Uh, Mayor Whitman.
Mr. President, I, I think it's extremely important, um, to the residents of Eastlake, as well as you all, to hear from Chief Moon. This has been, we've been very sensitive to our ability to respond to calls for services. I, I'm actually neutral on purpose and just want Chief Moon, if he can speak to, um, how they've adjusted, if there've been issues, et cetera, et cetera.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Corey Moon. I serve as the Fire Chief of Birmingham Fire Rescue Service. And I wanted to speak to the emergency response, response time concerns. I actually pulled some data to show you a little bit of analytics from twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four. Um, there was some discussion, I know, about the companies that responded in that area. We have Station Twelve, which has Engine Twelve, Rescue Twelve, and Engine Nineteen, which has Engine Nineteen, Rescue Nineteen. So just to show you a little bit of analytics, and let, let me step back a little bit. Cause around two thousand and one, NFPA, uh, Nat, National Fire Protection Agency established the standard for response times. And they set a goal for all career and volunteer fire departments around the nation to be able to respond within a five to eight-minute range, uh, ninety percent of the time. So that's the goal nationally. And our response times meet that goal between, we typically respond between five and eight minutes for every incident we, we respond to. So here's, here's the analytics behind that to support it. So for Engine Twelve, Rescue Nineteen, Engine Nineteen, Rescue Twelve, in twenty-twenty-three, that average response time was seven minutes and thirty-two seconds. Though same for companies in, from January one, twenty-twenty-four to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, their average response time was six minutes and fifty-two seconds. So those are tho, those companies within that timeframe. So you can, so you can see the response time actually went down. So there's been no negative impact on the per, on the personnel in that area with their response times. And I also have the entire department's response times in that same, same time period, and I give you, give you those as well. So for the entire department, from January one, twenty-twenty-three to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, the entire department's average response time was seven minutes and fifty-three seconds. And from January one, twenty-twenty-four to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, the entire department's average response time was eight minutes and eleven seconds. So there's been no significant impact to the Eastlake companies with the, uh, Safe Streets Initiative. So I just wanted to make sure that people understood that at a high level.
Thank you, Chief Man. Uh, I believe Councilor Clark has a question.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Chief Moon. I think this is one of the biggest issues, I think, with, you know, creating the permanent barriers, because once you respond, and I know a lot of times you do what you need to do at the home, and it's not as urgent getting away unless you've got someone in an EMT transport, then you need to get out of there quick. And, and you probably can't turn, you know, the big apparatus, like, you need to be able to go through some kind of way. And I know we can probably address this through the design of the permanent, like, so that the bollards or whatever can be, I think they can be, you know, laid down or whatever, so you can go straight out instead of having to go backwards up a street or something. I, I don't know. I think we can address it through design, but I, I, I think it'll have to be addressed, because, you know, when we develop, when, when private developers develop, say, apartments, they have to create a way for you to not have to back up or for you to have room to turn or get out. So that's my biggest concern, that we would design the permanent barrier in a way that you can go straight instead of backing up a street. And it, is that a concern, or?
So just, just as an additional note, all of our personnel who are trained and certified to drive, whether it's a fire truck, uh, rescue unit, or ladder truck, part of their training is they have to be able to drive and turn around in confined spaces. And we also have spotters on the ground. If we have to back up, we have to place a spotter on the ground to assist the driver in backing up. So that's something that our personnel train for, uh, year-round, and in order to be certified, they have to be able to do that.
Okay, but I, I guess I'm wondering, do we wanna create circumstances where they have to do that? And is my concern. Um, it, it just seems weird to me that maybe we could design the barriers, like those bollards, they can come down, or just they have keys.
Yeah, I mean, here's, here's the deal. We may be getting ahead of ourselves.
Okay.
I think there's opportunity to, if you decide to, then we can walk it out.
Okay.
Where.
I think that would be my biggest concern.
This, this, this is not gonna work without emergency services buying. We're here, I told you, we're here because of the residents' in, initial input.
Right.
We have to have their input as well, um, because they have to be in the best position to respond. And so that same process will continue, making sure whatever exists, whatever we create, we have their buy-in and we have to have emergency, um, responders buying as well.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure, or at least say that, you know, I'm interested in us, does, it sounds like we, with mapping and GIS and the dispatchers.
By the way, it's already up. Um, I meant to, I meant to share that, um, when we, with the permanent GIS, it's already been uploaded.
Okay, so I feel like we can make sure the dispatchers know how to get them there. I just wanna, I would like for us to be thoughtful about the design of the permanent barricades, so that we have a way for them to get out if they need to get out quickly.
You, I mean, you know, you know James Fowler as much as I do.
Okay, okay. I didn't want to say it on the record for you guys worried about that.
Yes, ma'am. This president, you, we all know, um, um, Director Fowler will be overly thoughtful in design.
Yeah, so as long as they can get out quickly, if they have to, if they have time to back up the street, fine. But if, if, if it's an emergency and they need to get out quickly, I'd like for us to be on that. Thank you.
Uh, you, Mr. President, um, you as representative of the district, the council as a body, and mainly the residents, so Eastlake, you have my commitment that, um, we have to be overly thoughtful. If this council by majority vote decides they want to go in a direction of permanent vacation, how do we come back to the residents first, um, as well as our first responders in tandem, um, to talk about what does that look like, um, to make sure, um, our response time and services to the residents, uh, is, is in the most efficient way.
Thank, thank you. Um, so as a representative for, um, the District Five and, and the Eastlake resident, I wanted to offer a few insights. At first, I wanna th, thank, um, Ms. Lumpkin and Walker. Um, they have been on the ground in the neighborhood, engaging with residents over this entire, um, pilot period. And, um, most recently, I was, you know, they've been at all the neighborhood meetings and, um, engaging with the residents and getting feedback, not just on this, but just taking any issue. Um, so that's very much appreciated. Um, I, you know, this has been, Mayor Whitman and I first talked about this in twenty-twenty-three. Um, but it's, it's been his project, so I've been more of an observer. That being said, you know, I really appreciate, um, the Eastlake neighborhood, you know, getting this, this type of, um, attention. Um, and I, but I've been, along the way, I've been paying attention to, you know, what residents have to say. Um, and by my observation, the overwhelming response has been positive. Um, when I have heard complaints, it's been from non-residents, people who live in adjacent neighborhoods, who use those streets to pass through on their way to somewhere else. Um, so, uh, you know, now they have to change their route that they may that they may have been using for the last thirty years. Um, so, uh, the other thing that I'll say is, is that it's been very quiet in my office, um, with regard to hearing from residents about this project. Uh, I have received one email, and that was from a resident who was in favor of the bar- barriers. Um, but because of a project, paving project that happened over the summer, those barriers on his street had to be temporary, temporarily removed so that the paving could be done on his street. And he just was contacting me to make sure that they, they were gonna go back in place because he's had such a positive experience. Um, to the best of my knowledge, uh, my, as far as calls, my staff has not communicated to me that we've, you know, received calls, um, one way or the other. So, all of that to say that it's been pretty quiet. Um, you know, what's before us today is continuation of the project. So, in terms of, of talking about a permanent situation, that is not before us right now. What's before us is just authorizing the continuation of the project. So, um, you know, there's more, there would have to be additional measures in order to make this, um, permanent. I will just say, so I, I moved to, um, neighborhood just south of Woodlawn twenty-four years ago. Um, you know, First Avenue North, uh, has been a corridor of, you know, prostitution, drug use, um, for a long time, many decades. You know, going back to, um, the nineteen nineties at least. Um, and one of the things that, when I ever got in office, one of the things that I did was, um, surveyed all of the abandoned and vacant properties across the entire district. And the Eastlake neighborhood, um, by far had the highest concentration of those types of properties. Um, and, you know, in thinking about how to address the sort of criminal, criminal element along First Avenue North, um, I thought about, okay, if we did have additional enforcement action, and I will say that generally it has improved dramatically along First Avenue North over the, um, you know, past couple of decades. So, it's, it's not nearly as bad as it was, um, you know, in the early two thousands. But, um, one of, you know, it's still an issue. But thinking about, you know, if, if there were concerted effort to address that activity along First Avenue North, having, you know, such a, having the neighborhood be so permeable to that activity being pushed into the neighborhood and having so many vacant structures and vacant properties, um, that's been a concern for me. So, I, I think this, you know, has generally been positive. I know that it's not perfect. Um, you know, we will have a conversation in the future about whether or not those changes should be permanent. Um, but at this time, you know, I, I, I think there's more positives than negatives. So, just wanted to offer those comments. So, there's no additional dis- discussion. Uh, we, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, all right, so we need a motion.
A move approval.
Second.
All right, we're ready for the vote. All right, item sixty-two is approved.
Mr. President.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Change is always painful. And I, the only, the only request that I have of the mayor, which really I know he's going to do it, is to keep tweaking it so that the people who came that are unhappy will become happier.
Ma- Mr. President, to your colleagues, um, um, point, yes, ma'am, uh, to all of you, thank you, to, um, Alicia Lumpkin, Latoya Walker, thank you as well, to the entire team, every person that knocked on the door, attended the meeting. Um, I want to thank the entire team, department heads, um, the deputy department heads, their team members, mayor's staff. Uh, but the residents who remain, I want to thank them too. Um, and it's been stated and is worth restating, uh, this is not perfect. When we look at public safety and keeping people safe, we always look at it from a toolbox. This is a tool within the toolbox, if you will. This is not, uh, one fix all or the end-all. Um, there's still ample work to do. Um, for those who, um, I guess we're not forward, we have to continue to listen to you, we have to continue to get your feedback. For those who are forward, we have to continue to get their feedback as well. So, I want to be clear, this process, um, is moving from a pilot to what's next, if you would, and what next, you still have to take the time to listen, gather feedback, assess, reassess, um, as well as listen to the professionals on the ground, and includes Police Department, Fire Department, um, PEP, Public Works, and so many other departments who've been leaning in. So, um, so two vote, one, we continue, we will continue to engage the residents, and two, we'll continue to keep you informed as well.
Thank you.
Just a note on the, um, ordinance, the first page, the July the eighth is the date, the, the blank here on the first page.
Okay, noted. All right, so item number three, please.
Item three. An ordinance implementing provisions of the bipartisan infrastructure law to incentivize use of local labor and to further incentivize participation of responsible bidders employing apprentices under approved apprenticeship programs for the city of Birmingham funded contracts to provide conditions for implementing and enforcing contracts under these programs. Uh, this is an item of permanent operation, this first reading, I need UC to pass it today.
Motion for unanimous consent.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Smithman.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. Council President Protem Alexander.
Aye.
Council President Oakley.
Aye.
All right, item is before you. The motion on that item.
Move the item.
Item is before you.
Any questions on this item? We're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Uh, Counselor, I'm sorry, Counselor Abbott had a question.
Yeah, just, can we get a red line of what we, what we're doing? These first three items, three, four, and five, can, can we get a red line even after the vote? So, we can see any changes.
All right. Chief Mitchell's indicating yes, so.
I love red lines.
Okay.
That, that was all.
All right, now, Mr. Clark, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
All right, that, item passes, item number four, please.
Item four, an ordinance, meaning ordinance number twenty-four dash one twenty-nine, Title Two, General Government, Chapter Five, Boards, Commissions, and Committees, Article Eight, Keep Birmingham Beautiful Commission of the General Code, the City of Birmingham, to further provide the appointment in terms of the commission, uh, again, permanent operation, first reading, I need, uh, UC first.
Motion for UC.
Second.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Smithman.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. Council Protem Alexander. Council President Oakley.
Aye.
Motion on the item.
Move the item.
Item is before you.
Any discussion on this item? We are ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Item four is approved, item five, please.
All right. Item five. An ordinance repealing ordinance number twenty-two dash forty, which provided for the creation of the City of Birmingham retention incentives for the success and expansion rise program, and to replace it with a new ordinance providing for the creation of the City of Birmingham retention incentives for success and expansion, uh, rise program. Again, item of permanent operation, I need UC to pass today.
Motion for UC.
Second.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Smithman. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. Councilmember, uh, Protem Alexander. Council President Oakley.
All right. Uh, now, motion on the item.
Second.
Okay, item is before you.
All right, so, any questions on this item? Okay. Here's, we're ready for the vote.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right. That item passes, um, council, I want to jump in here and pause for a second. We have items, um, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-three, and sixty-four plus announcements. Um, so we still need to handle those. The, the mayor is due to give his State of the City address at noon. Um, we do want to get to our public speakers, but, uh, if you desire, we can recess the meeting to attend the mayor's State of the City, um, and, and come back after that and resume the meeting. Um, but I do want to get to our public speakers first, so, um, without objection, we'll suspend the rules. And we have a request from Reverend McClure Senior of Revelation Church to speak. So, um, if you would come to the mic.
Good morning, good morning to mayor in his absence, uh, everyone, council, everybody else. I'm here, uh, to make an announcement, ask for a little support, if you would. Uh, my brother, uh, Roger McClure, uh, raised here in Birmingham, Alabama, a student of Powder Elementary School, Western High School, um, through a foundation, through our family, uh, we've probably given a couple hundred thousand dollars easily to the city and, uh, to churches throughout Birmingham for a number of years. Uh, he's produced a new movie, and he's bringing the movie to Birmingham. It'll be here in Birmingham, um, Friday, the seventeenth. And, um, I'm coming to bring it for the council, see if you guys can support us in a way, uh, put it on your email list and shoot it out to your constituents throughout the city that we could pack out to theaters. Uh, supporters in this movie, it's a, um, great feat, the young man overcame poverty. We grew up in a college real projects. Uh, later on, lived in Powderly, uh, we weren't, we live not too far from Dr. Sparks, but we were in a, in a little bitty house, not the big houses like him. But we would really love to have you guys support us. Um, it's an amazing feat. Um, Ty Diggs, Tay Diggs, he's one of the actors in the movie. Uh, if you ever watched the movie Snowfall, uh, the young lady, uh, in Snowfall, she's one of the actresses in the movie. It's gonna be a big thing. It'll be here, oh, we have a, we have a trailer. Did you see that? I didn't know.
I don't know if we're gonna get the audio because of our AV problems occurring, so I'm being told no. Um, but I'm sure the, 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 uh, trailer is available on YouTube or?
Yes, sir. We can get it to you. Uh, but I think it's a very big feat for a son of our city, uh, rising up, coming up from right here in Birmingham, Alabama, product of Western High School. Uh, it's gonna be a major feat, and if we could, uh, help me get the word out, to pack the theaters Friday. It's gonna be a trustful theater, it's gonna be the Patton Theater, uh, I think one of the other theaters. And, um, really would appreciate whatever assistance you guys can give, and appreciate the time that you allow me to have to speak.
All right, thank you. Yes. Pr- Pr- Protem Alexander.
May I not respond to him?
Yes, just, yeah, give us some movie times.
Uh, uh, movie times, I, I really can't say, whatever time, they show different movies, uh, at the various theaters they'll be showing up. Both Eyes Open, uh, I have a moment, I can tell you this, uh, a story about a young lady who was involved in a relationship and got out of it, and she started going through some heartaches, some pains, some tragedies through it. It's a suspense thriller. You're gonna love, you're gonna appreciate me for it. So, let's get out, uh, see the movement and get the word out.
Alexander had a question.
Thank you, Reverend McClure. I do want to thank you. You are a great asset and, uh, really serve District Seven and that Powderly area. So, we thank you. So, we're gonna help you get out the word, let me know.
Thank you so much. And I want to appreciate you for coming out for, every year, I'm a family again, we give out turkeys for Thanksgiving. I think at this point now, totally free out of our pocket, we've given out over a hundred and twenty thousand turkeys. Amen for Thanksgiving. So, we really appreciate all the support. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
And I just wanted to say, uh, definitely we'd be getting the word out to my constituents as well, and glad to see that, uh, uh, Pastor Mike, uh, was recovering and.
Thank you so much. He's on recovery now.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Council Woods.
Hey, good morning. I can tell you love your brother. He's sat here for a couple of hours. Uh, but we appreciate the rock, Father Man, really excited for this project, and, uh, definitely we'll get that information out. And I appreciate you coming down to share this.
Thanks so much, Councilwoman Woods, appreciate it.
Looking good today.
All right.
Everybody take turns. I love doing this. It feels really well.
All right.
Thank you all for your time.
Um, next speaker, please.
Mister. Douglas Young.
Okay, did Pastor Erskine lead?
Oh, I'm sorry. Apologize. Yo, yo, how's it going, everyone? Councilmen and mayors just left, y'all. I got some good news and I got some bad news. I'm gonna make it very fast.
Is Pastor Erskine here?
I apologize.
Okay.
I'm gonna stand with me and, oh, but you can, you notice me, I'm just backup. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, I'm with you. Okay, okay. So, to start off, Mayor, uh, President, President Quinn, I just wanted to say, I've been knowing a lot of just viewing the Facebook, the social media. I remember I came in and I spoke to you about, um, I spoke to the whole councilman about going on vacation and just like getting to know each other, having fun. Ever since then, but I've been seeing you at the black cookouts, I've been seeing you in, in, in black spots, smiling like you've never smiled, my dog. I just wanted to say, bro, that's, that's a good look, man. I know you having fun, continue doing what you're doing. On, um, on, on side note, I wanted to come, uh, make a comment to the mayor because I made a comment to the mayor a while ago, y'all. Those of you who don't know, I'm from Birmingham. When I was sixteen years old, I got shot six times in Birmingham. I got shot six times downtown Birmingham. One of my best friends died right next to me. His heart got blown out his chest. I'm not kidding. And, and I made a comment to the mayor. I told the mayor, I said, Mayor, you have to stop being so weak, man. We got a lot of young men who look up to you. And I think he took offense to that. And I don't normally apologize, but I want to apologize to the heart of the mayor, not the ego, but the heart of the mayor, because when I came in today, and I've noticed a lot of times, he don't show me good energy. I said, how's it going, Mayor? I'm shaking everybody's hand. You can look at the camera, I'm talking to everybody. That's just my personality. I literally can, I, man, I can connect people in a way that most people can't. The mayor didn't show me no love. The energy, the aura was not there. He was appointed, he was elected to serve the people of the public trust. This is a trust, it's a trust account for all of us. We're holding trust in y'all as trustees, and we're beneficiaries of that trust. And the mayor, the way he, the aura that I got, it was not positive, man. And if I felt that, and I'm, I'm the light of the party for real, and I bring energy. I can only imagine what a person who don't know the information that I know and how to administer their will and to operate in administration of what's happening, I feel some type of way. So, just imagine people who don't know that the police are supposed to be protecting them as trustees, and they're out there just fighting against them. They, they are hurt because he's not even connecting with them. He's not connecting with them. And I got one more thing, and I'm gone. I got twenty-seven seconds, but I sent an email, October twenty-second, y'all. I hope y'all all got it. It was a notice of claim to each one of you guys for breach of trust. Mayor, I hope you're listening, because I sent the breach of trust to you, the governor, the police department, Jefferson County, the sheriffs, and a, uh, claim for maledictation. and a, uh, claim for maladministration for fifty million dollars. That's, that's personal capacity and that's commercial capacity, because you got to have a bond and an oath to serve his office, because most black men from this city don't know what I know. I know the top one percent information that I know, they can't, they can't uphold themselves like I can, I know the times when my words go. But, um, I'm holding no offense, I got to hold y'all accountable, because I came in with open arms to say, "Hey, I want to work with the city." Nobody called me back, nobody emailed me back, it's up Miss Smithman team, she did. And I, again, I said, I, I, I'm doing everything, y'all, but nobody, nobody. When I, when I got thirty-five employees and four shops, one of the most successful people out of Birmingham, and I've been down, and if you've been down, the only way you can go up is up. Um, so also, y'all, I sent y'all an email outside of the lawsuit and the fifty million dollar, um, class action suit. I sent over a B O B, uh, market that I wanted to bring to Birmingham. I'm requesting twenty thousand dollars, this, this is outside lawsuit, because I just want to help Birmingham. I'm requesting twenty thousand dollars if the people and the trusts allow it to bring this event to the city of Birmingham, classes like rug making, line dancing, aqua aerobics, um, small production little classes, and that's for the city. So, I'm going to pass these out, if you guys will, I already sent some to your offices, you guys, and that's my time.
Oh, thank you.
Hey, President, can I do one thing, get the public on my, y'all? I want to play a song, two minutes, y'all?
No, 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 no.
Can I play a song for y'all?
We're trying to, to get somewhere else, so, thank you.
Thank y'all so much.
Alright, um, do we need to do a motion? So, uh, can we just recess, or do we need a vote on it? Time to, to reconvene would be, do we have, do, well, let me ask this, do we have anyone in the audience who is here for one of the items that we have not handled yet? Okay, so, let's take item sixty-one quickly. Item sixty-one.
Item sixty-one, ordinance adopting a, uh, restated moratorium on automated car washes, uh, uses and structures within the city of Birmingham in the hearing of our parties, uh, motion, aye, on the item.
But it's, has to be, no, this is, uh, we don't need U C on this, right?
No.
Alright, so it's been motioned in second, is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just one thing, so, when we get through with this moratorium, we'll have ordinance changes, correct?
That's correct, this, uh, is a temporary, um, moratorium, and the idea is that it would culminate in, um, changes to, I assume zoning in terms of where these automated car washes would be allowed.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we had an end game
Yes.
to our moratorium, because?
Yes, it's a, a temporary measure, so.
Okay, that was, that was my only question.
Right. Okay. Okay, um, so, we still have sixty-one in front of us. This is a public hearing, um, we're trying to be expedient this morning, um, so. Alright, so, so it is a public hearing, if you wish to speak to or for, for or against this item, please come to the mic, remember to state your name and address. And I, I, I'd appreciate it if you'd be brief.
I would be very brief. I feel, uh, I'm Elizabeth Reed, Liz Reed, I live at nineteen fifteen, Twentieth Avenue South. I would probably be most impacted by a car wash because I live right next door to where it's being built. Um, I hope for the continuation of this moratorium. Ideally, I would wish the people next door would just give up and go away. I don't think that's happening, um, but obviously, there's just too many of them popping up. I just saw that the Lloyd's is being destroyed and is being replaced with a car, car wash. I, I don't know if that's in Birmingham jurisdiction, I think those areas on two eighty are, are, um, or what? It's not, um, but anyway, I just hope for a continuation of the moratorium. I think, um, I don't even know what this is about, so, I'm sorry.
Thank you, appreciate it, next speaker, please.
Good, good morning, Susan Barnacastle, twenty forty-four, Twentieth Avenue South, forty-two-year resident. Um, I appreciate the fact that you have continued the effort for a moratorium. I think that it is very important for the city as you look around. We have experienced improper building on our street of a McDonald's, the neighborhood fought it, we lost, it's been an abandoned property for ten years. So, hopefully with a moratorium, you will look at better planning for the city and allowing this in areas, especially not in neighborhoods and in areas that are high traffic. It is a major problem if something like that comes into a neighborhood. And a moratorium, as you drive around the city and look at the buildings that were not planned well for the location and were not a good fit and are now abandoned, we are still suffering with ten years of abandoned property neglected in a very established neighborhood in a high-traffic area. So, we appreciate the fact that you are continuing the moratorium, it's just too late for us. I thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
I'm John Barnacastle, twenty forty-four, Twentieth Avenue South, that's my wife. Also, the moratorium, I hope that this is to extend the moratorium.
Yes.
Because as she said, it's too late for us on Twentieth Avenue South where a car wash will be. I appreciate the council trying to fight it, court action, so forth, but it's too late for us. But one thing I would like to say to the, to the council and everybody else, had the rezoning plans, ours is southern area rezoning, had that plan been approved back when, it wouldn't be allowed in that area. So, I'm asking that you, you speed up. Southern area meeting today's been postponed because of the mayor's speech, whatever. But I, I hope that you look at these things very closely, try to get the, the rezoning plans passed. It affects all neighborhoods, not just ours, it, it'll affect all neighborhoods, and I'll see you next week.
Alright, thank you. Okay, so, that's all of our public speakers, uh, any additional discussion? Seeing done, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Alright, item sixty-one is passed, we all ha- also have folks here this morning, um, relative to item sixty-four, so we'd like to hear item sixty-four, please.
Item sixty-four.
This is one of the addendum items.
A resolution approving authority of the mayor to execute a First Amendment to per- to a purchase-sale agreement with C S X Transportation Incorporated dated December twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, pursuant to which the city agreed to purchase from C S X a railroad quarter, uh, needed for the Valley Creek Rails to Trail project for a purchase price of one million one hundred thousand dollars. To amend the agreement, to change C S X's address, and to extend the deadline for the city to provide C S X a survey and meet some vows, description of the property, motion, please.
I move approval.
Thanks, guys.
Alright, Ms. Buck, you want to tell us a little bit about what's going on here?
Oh, yes, um, so really, I thought you guys approved, I was like, this is so simple.
We're getting there.
What it is, it's an amendment to the purchase agreement that has already been executed. Within the purchase agreement, C S X allotted thirty days for us to do, or City of Birmingham, to do a survey based on what they call a valuation map. It's their sta- standard way of doing surveys. But because of the holidays, they got it to us fourteen days late, and so we're asking for a ten-day extension so that our team has sufficient time to complete that survey and get it to them. And then also, we have to update their address because apparently they moved. They're still in Jacksonville though, that was a question yesterday.
Okay, thank you, uh, believe we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Alright, now, thank you.
Item sixty-four is approved, um, so, at this time, we're going to recess and we will reconvene at one thirty, or at the call of the chair, uh, whichever comes first. And we'll come back and we'll do, we still have item sixty, sixty-three, and then all the new business, uh, announcements and so on, so on and so forth. So, we are recessed.
Let's, let's say, uh, you said one thirty?
Yes.
Okay, let's just say one thirty.
Okay, one thirty.
Alright, thank you. All in, oh, we need a motion. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed.